My question, agents. United States of America and to their father for which it stands, one nation under God in this hope for liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Approval of the minutes are November eighteenth. Does anybody have any corrections or adjustments on the minutes?
I think two accepted as submitted.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Our minutes are accepted. Uh, oh, I just want to say Tara's here tonight, and as you all know, she's been elected town clerk, so we're gonna be losing her as secretary, but we have Kelly McIntyre here. So unfortunately, she's probably gonna be inducted under fire, but I'm sure she'll survive. So good luck to you, Kelly. All right, first order business is gonna be, uh, Eight Ferris Drive, Michael Kinsley. Yes, Michael, what's up? You're gonna have to come over to the microphone here and tell us who you are, okay?
Good evening. Mike Kinsley, live at Eight Ferris Drive.
Okay. Uh, I see you're looking for approval to construct a new addition eighteen by thirty-five to the rear of the house, where a portion addition lands within a setback of the side yard. As seen on the property survey, the existing house shows a twenty-two point two, took twenty-two feet, two inches from the property line at the rear of the house. Therefore, a variance of seven feet, ten inches will be needed for the proposed addition, which is found under code, town code one seventy-five SR zoning district. Now, I looked at your plans, it looks like you're just trying to square off the house pretty much, is that what you're trying to do?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and you're gonna put in a bigger kitchen?
That's correct.
And a bigger...
Add one bedroom and a bigger kitchen.
One bedroom, okay. And you're in contact with the, uh, Health Department and all like that?
I've been going, I've been dealing with the Building Department at the moment, yes.
Okay, all right, 'cause you're probably gonna have to go to the Health Department for septic or something like that, so...
Yep, that's correct.
All right, um, it looked like it's, you're already within that line, you're already within that, you know...
Yeah, the house already sits, the existing house sits within the setbacks.
At that same length, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, uh, it's not really going any further, you're just adding it to the back?
Adding it to the back, yes.
You're not going further into the side setback, is what I'm trying to say?
No.
No?
Nope.
That's my question. Well, I looked at everything and reviewed everything, and, um, it looks like you have everything here. Uh... Take your time, Paul, we're just going over the review of completeness for the one on Ferris, first of all.
Just so I'm clear, looking at the, the survey that you have, the addition is, is that gonna be, is it shown on that survey where the addition's gonna be?
No, that's, that survey, it was done right before, at the house.
Before, so it's in the bigger materials?
It's correct.
Okay.
All right, let's see what you have. You got, you got everything? I think that you have a questions answered, like, we have like a town worksheet, it's called the five, uh, five factors question, right? I see you have a supplemental worksheet, is that your answers to those questions, or...
Yes, I typed them all up.
Okay, did, did you get a supplemental worksheet for that at the town, did you ask for that?
Uh, that, that's all filled out as well, that should be in there.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for. Either neighbor's or I was finding. Look at the calendar, when's the next meeting, February or something? You got a calendar?
Uh, yeah.
February. Okay, uh, yeah. I don't see that here. You know, I'm trying to say, maybe you can show me, you know, come on over here for a second.
My original application was, I filled out the original application, I got, I got a full call back, someone opened the department, I had to add, I had to fill out the supplemental, which I did, and I handed in supplemental worksheet, these are all answers typed out.
Where did you get the questions from?
From the packet that was given.
Oh, I see, see, there's a sheet that we, that we use.
Yeah, I usually filled out by hand, I picked it up for you.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, oh, now I understand what you did now, okay.
I listed it all out for you.
All right, so it's, 'cause you didn't have enough room in there, is that what you think, or some of, some of the things?
Yeah.
Okay, great, all right, that's fine. Uh, anybody have any questions on this at this point in time? Anybody? Paul, okay. All right, it's time to make a motion that the application be deemed complete.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna sit up for the next meeting, and I don't have my calendar, so, what is February, the second week of February date?
The tenth.
Anybody can give it to me?
Second.
The tenth?
Second, the tenth?
The tenth.
Okay. So you'll be set for a public hearing for February tenth.
Okay, great.
Same, seven thirty, same location here.
Great.
And while it'll happen, our secretary will send out notices to all your neighbors and everything else like that, so this way if anybody has any concerns or questions, they'll be able to come to a public hearing and, you know, discuss their issues.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Let me just, you know, please, gotta change? Ah, we can get to it later on, okay. Uh, let's see, next one would be accessory of Lakes, Lake Surprise, sixty Lakes Surprise.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this one.
You're gonna recuse yourself, okay. Okay, we, uh, we completed, we agreed on last month, there was a review for completion, and that was complete, but you needed, um, to submit the plans for the accessory apartment?
Yes.
Okay, which you did.
Yes.
Okay, we have that. And you submitted another survey?
Yeah, just to show, uh, officially, that's, we're gonna, I had it, the corner of the building located where we want it.
Right.
To show you how it's situated in, in the property, uh...
Okay.
And where the other house that we're currently building is relative to it.
Right.
I thought, you know, with the stamp on it, it makes it sort of...
You haven't changed locations.
No.
Okay, so it's just an official survey?
Yeah, since I had it, I thought...
While we discussed last?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Okay. Uh, my question attorney is that, he's looking for a variance for the bigger garage, you know, over the thousand, also the accessory apartment, a special permit, so I guess it would have to be two, uh, 'cause it's gonna be accessory apartment, 'cause he's putting an apartment over the garage.
Yeah, but the variance is the size of the garage that's being sought.
Okay.
It's limited to, the code says a thousand square feet.
Right.
And the accessory garage is one thousand nine hundred seventy-three square feet.
Yeah, but not the apartment, you said the apartment was...
That's inclusive of the, um...
The apartments...
So he doesn't need an accessory apartment, uh, permit?
No, it's just an area variance for the, the size of the structure.
Okay. All right, so, 'cause I'm just trying to say, I know, usually, you know, we go with an accessory apartment, I just wanna make sure we're doing, you know, he doesn't need it. Because it's gonna be one, one, the main house you're building is gonna be occupied...
Yes.
And this house is gonna be used for guests.
That's it.
But it could be rented also. I mean, it's possibility, I'm not saying...
Yeah, no, of course it is.
Everybody says you're not gonna do it, you know?
Yeah.
I trust everybody.
Right.
I'm just trying to say that sometimes somebody may wanna rent it.
It's possible, yes.
Right, it's possible, it's a possibility that it could be rented, that's my question.
Just so I'm clear, that, it's a permitted use, an accessory apartment is a permitted use by right in the RR zoning district.
Right, but I'm saying, should the wording give him also a special permit for the accessory apartment besides the garage, is my question.
It's, it's a use per, under, in the RR, it's a use permitted by right.
By right.
So what we're approving is the size of the garage that contains an accessory, um, um, apartment, but that's allowed by right.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this?
Yeah.
Huh? No? No questions?
No.
Okay, at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, variance be approved?
Second.
Vote, vote. I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, you're right. Oh, does anybody wanna talk about this? My mistake. Does anybody else wanna speak about this? No? You're a lucky man, nobody, nobody's had a complaint.
They got bigger fish to fry.
Okay.
Just for the record, we just get your name?
Yes, my name's Thomas Patachek. P-T-A-C-E-K.
Okay.
I'm an agent for the owner.
Okay, I got a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I make a motion now to approve the variance. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're all set, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to seek some confidential legal instruction from our attorney.
I'll make second.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we're gonna go into a special session, 'cause I wanna get some legal advice first, and then we will come back out.
Just so I'm clear, it's a closed, call the closed session to seek confidential legal advice from counsel.
Call the closed session for confidential legal advice. Apologize to everyone.
We have to make a motion.
Make a motion, then we go back into session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There were a lot of legal questions, and a lot of people had different legal questions, it was only fair that they get some answers, but they are gonna apologize at all at the time. And I will give everybody a chance to talk tonight, so nobody's gonna be cut short. Okay, but I can tell you right now, there's gonna be no decision tonight, so. On this, on particular, on nine D is the one I'm talking about, right? Won't be a decision. Um, first, we're up is businesses of, where was it? Mr. Ventura, Route nine D. Uh, we had this in front of us for a while, what this is, is, um, uh, he's, he's up kinda seeking a interpretation of town code, uh, that's existing use on the premises are pre-existing legally non-conforming use permitted pursuant to the code, as well as an appeal of April twenty-third, twenty nineteen stop work order issued by the code enforcement officer. The property's approximately nine point five two acres and situated in a highway commercial. Uh, what the thing was, they're saying that the stop work order should be lifted, and the rock crushing and soil, uh, processing is a pre-existing non-conforming use. Like I say, we had a number of meetings on this, we started in June, I believe, we started June. Uh, it was scheduled to be heard in June, July, the applicant's attorney asked to be postponed, and we finally met in August, and then, I think it was September, October, and I think October, we closed the public hearing, and, uh, we're gonna vote on November, then attorney asked for, said he couldn't make November, anyway, now he says he can't make here, he couldn't make January, so, um, at this point in time, I think we've given him enough leeway, and, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion that we take the vote tonight. The public hearing was closed, and we decided last meeting to take a vote. Can I get a motion to, uh...
I make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, now, in this matter, the applicants, Ricky and Mark Ventura, have filed an appeal to this board from a stop work order issued by the town's code enforcement officer dated April twenty-third, twenty nineteen. The property which is subject to the appeal is located at one lane gate road within the town of Phillips Town. The town code enforcement officer's stop work order indicated that based on a site inspection of the subject property, it was observed that there was a processing of vegetative material, demolition, and construction debris, rock crushing, and stockpiling of processed material. The stop work order was issued by the code enforcement officer for two basic reasons. First, the ongoing operations described in the stop work order were not shown on the planning board's site plan for the subject property dated October second, nineteen eighty-three. Second, the use of the property observed by the code enforcement officer was not allowed in accordance with section one seventy-five fifty B of the current zoning law, which states in pertinent part that the processing of soil, dirt, gravel, and rock, including rock crushing, is prohibited, in all zoning districts south of the intersection of East Mountain Road and Route nine. In this case, I believe the record presented to the board establishes that the code enforcement officer's stop work order was correct, and there is no valid basis for granting the Ventura's appeal. First, the use of the subject property is not shown on the October second, nineteen ninety-three site plan, and this supports the issuance of a stop work order since the ongoing use does not require a site plan approval. I wrote this down, so I make sure that I make a mistake. Second, although Ventura argued that their use of the property is pre-existing non-conforming use, I do not find the record supports this position. The board has carefully examined the record, including a March twenty-first, twenty nineteen decision from Supreme Court, appellate term. That decision after trial found that the use of the property did not constitute a pre-existing non-conforming use. Here, the record shows that the Ventura first began to make use of the property for the rock crushing and related operations in the early nineteen eighties. The zoning law in effect was nineteen sixty-eight zoning law. The nineteen sixty-eight zoning law provided in pertinent part that any use not permitted in the law is prohibited. Here, the Ventura's use of the property was not permitted under the law when it was commenced, and therefore, I find it was not a legal non-conforming use. I also find that the record does not support that the Ventura's use of their property was accessory to any listed permitted uses, such as building and contractor's yard. Does anybody on the board wish to speak to this, if they have any comments, remarks?
Well, after reading the Supreme Court, uh, decision, and then going through the record, which was extensive, I didn't find anything that was significantly different from what was denied in the Supreme Court decision, so I feel that there's no reason to, um, come up with a different opinion.
Okay, anybody else?
Oh, I agree with the chairman that the rock crushing activity was never a legal activity under any of the zoning laws, so for that reason, I would not be supporting this appeal.
Okay, uh, at this point, I'd like to make a motion that Ventura appeal of April twenty-third work order could be, ought to be denied, with a written decision to be filed, memorizing the board's determination to be paid by the board's counsel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who seconded it?
I'll second.
You'll second it? Mr. Ventura, second. Okay, I can take a roll call vote. Mr. Fiston?
I, I agree with what you're saying, and I vote to deny.
Mr. Wim?
I vote to deny.
I vote to deny.
And I vote to deny as well.
And I do, so that's unanimous, so that the application is denied. Next order of business is, uh, Dr. Romero, revocable trust of five twenty-nine Route D. And Mr. Romero made an appeal for interpretation of the code. Uh, I think what we should probably do, 'cause we have a lot of people here, I know a lot of people wanna speak.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this.
Okay. These gentlemen are recusing themselves because, uh, personal reasons. Uh, let's see. What I'd like to do is put, try to put a little order to it. So first, maybe I'll have Dr. Romero speak, then Mr. Rassik, if he wants to speak, then Mr. Rassik's attorney, then Mr. Romero's attorney, and then we'll go from there. So are we supposed to say, Mr. Dr. Romero, first, please? You up to the microphone, and I know you sent something, maybe you wanted, we'd like to speak about the letter that you sent.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this evening. I'm Sidney Babcock, and here with my spouse, Jose Romeu, and our lawyer, Luke Hilbert. The five twenty-five Route nine D has been our home for the last thirty-nine years. Carol and Joe Rist were our neighbors dur, next door at five twenty-nine for most of those years. They lived in a single-story rectangular cottage which Joe built by himself and there in the early sixties, and therefore pre-code. The living space was limited to the ground floor. When we purchased our home in nineteen eighty-one, it was with the full knowledge that their home was non-conforming by the code at that time. At one point, Joe added an outdoor terrace and consulted with us to make sure that it was not impinging on the current available setback. They were wonderful neighbors, they had our keys, and indeed, we shared the joys and sorrows of each other's lives over the years, we looked out for each other. Some time ago, the house was sold, we were looking forward to meeting our new neighbors, I went over to introduce myself, offer my help, and gave them my contact information. We didn't hear from them again until the meeting here in November of last year. In early July, in early July or thereabout of last year, we heard demolition within the house next door. Soon thereafter, there was external demolition, when the roof came off, we became concerned about the setbacks and potential scale of the project. Whereupon, on July twelfth of last year, we visited the Buildings Department in order to find out what was happening, as we had not been notified of any new construction. We were asked to return the following Monday, July fifteenth. We spent the weekend scrutinizing the zoning code specifically in regard to building expansions on a previously non-conforming home. And finally, looking at the plans, it struck us that the building plans did not follow the regulation, specifically this regulation. General Legislation of the Town of Phillips Town, New York, Part Two, Article Six, under paragraph one seventy-five twenty-three, General Non-Conforming Use, Subsection B two, quote, "A non-conforming use or structure may be enlarged by a maximum twenty-five percent of its floor area or impervious surface, whichever is less, by the grant of a special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals," end of quote. As we understand it, that means that even if a permit is obtained from the Zoning Board of Appeals, the expansion cannot exceed the living area of the original footprint of the house by more than twenty-five percent. Furthermore, in other words, to do anything, an appeal must be first made to the Zoning Board of Appeals, that is how we understand it. The new additions are also approximately sixteen feet from the property line, they also increase the living space or floor area by about two-hundred percent as we see it. When you consider the new living areas, that is, the second story, the new basement, which according to the current plans, is clearly added living space, and the third story called an attic, in this case, actually, an expansion of the living area as well, no permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is required by the regulation, was issued. None of this was brought to the ZBA for permission in accordance with the regulation, nor were we or any other neighbors, as far as we know, notified of any building proposal. At that point, on July fifteenth, we were told by the Buildings Department there was no such regulation, as I quoted above, and would we please email the chapter and verse of the regulation we were quoting. We were then told that no Zoning Board of Appeals would deny a permit for this expansion. We were also informed that the Buildings Department had wide latitude enforcement and interpretation of any codes, and quote, "tends to side with the builder," end of quote. We were not aware that this was an issue where sides were to be taken. Our email of July fifteenth of the Buildings Department with the appropriate section of the B two code as requested remained unanswered. Further emails followed on July twenty-sixth, again asking for the Buildings Department advice on contacting the Zoning Board and the B two regulation. No advice was forthcoming, nor anything about the B two regulation. Because of the Buildings Department's nonresponsiveness, we then directly emailed the Chair of the ZBA and its members, including our communication with the Buildings Department. Then, a subsequent email from the Buildings Department came, and it again did not address the regulation I quoted above. After we were denied access to the file and plans, further emails were sent to the ZBA in August, September, and October. In these communications, and also our phone conversation in mid-August, we outlined our reasons to request an impartial arbiter to decide the issues raised by the failure of the Buildings Department, the contractor-owner, or the architect to file for the required special B two permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. These are our concerns, and in our layman's understanding, form the basis of our petition. One, the added new second floor of the current structure is about sixteen feet from the property line, it also increases the living area and floor area by much more than the allowable twenty-five percent, even if a permit had been requested and issued. A permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals has to this day not been requested, much less issued. The new second floor increases the floor area by at least a hundred percent, this is clearly delineated in the plans as we see it. Two, the basement is no longer a basement, it is heated, it has four wide, tall glazed doors opening to a large glazed screen porch. This does not appear to meet the definition of an unfinished basement for storage and equipment. It is clear that much of this basement is not a basement, rather, it is added living space. Again, all of this is clearly shown in the plans, at least to us. The large glazed screen porch itself further adds to the floor area of the building. Three, the new attic does not appear to be an attic with its traditional uses of storage, heating, and air handling. It is in fact lofted spaces connected by individual steps to this corresponding bedroom below. There is no floor or ceiling separation between the bedrooms below and the lofted areas above. These portions of the attic are in fact yet another living space area and added floor area, again, not following the B two regulation I quoted above. Again, sorry to repeat this, but all of this is clearly delineated in the plans. Four, when you add up the areas of the newly created living spaces, they far and away exceed by several orders of magnitude the allowed twenty-five percent expansion to the original floor area of the non-conforming structure. Five, it bears emphasizing that a permit to allow twenty-five percent expansion was never requested of the ZBA nor granted by the ZBA as mandated by the code. Six, all of these added living areas are approximately sixteen feet from the property line, again, all of this is clear from the plans. It might be argued that what has happened is a transposition of the previous non-compliant basement into a second story. This kind of transposition is not in the code cited. The code addresses floor area and impervious surface that is the footprint of the house. I ask, how can you transpose a previous non-living space, non-conforming space, the Rist basement, and call it a conforming second story? The current project, with its full height glass doors opening onto the terrace and heating, is clearly intended as a living space, at the very least by itself. This markedly expands the living space floor area well beyond the maximum allowed by the code that I've stated. The fact remains that the overall floor area increase for the entire project now again far exceeds the maximum twenty-five percent, even if approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. I must add that we made four visits to the Buildings Department in an attempt to find a solution to this issue, and each time, we were denied permission to file a petition to interpret this regulation. Those visits were the following. One, July twelfth.
Stop, just a second, I mean... Yes. What do you mean denied? I have to explain that a little bit. Who denied it, and who said what denied it?
We were, by, uh, the Buildings and the code enforcement officer.
Mr. Warner.
Mr. Warner, yes.
What did he say exactly, sir? Denies it?
He denied them, yes.
Okay.
Denied giving us the papers, and I also quoted earlier that he mentioned that he had great latitude to interpret these things, and that side with the builder, all of that was said to us. Okay, I'm sorry.
Did you file an appeal?
We did with a lawyer, once we got a lawyer, that's coming.
I mean, did you hand an appeal from the building permit to Mr. Warner, is that what your testimony is?
I don't think so.
May I interrupt? I'm Jose Romeu.
Okay.
I'm Jose Romeu, I'm his spouse.
Now, let's, what you're...
No, no, but let me answer his, your, Mr. Roth's question.
Go ahead.
We asked for the paperwork, for the petition to file an opinion with the CBA, four times, by email and in person, and the paperwork was not made available to us, and that's why...
Who the email sent to?
The emails were sent to the Buildings Department, Mr. Warner.
Okay.
And, and that, at that point, July twenty-sixth, is when I appealed to you, I just informed you that we were being denied this petition.
You sent me an email, and I gave you my phone number.
That's correct, and we spoke on the phone.
Phone number, we spoke on the phone.
We spoke on the phone.
And I told you what to do, I told you to go see Mr. Warner.
That's correct, by, yeah, that was July twenty-nine, that was now August, middle of August.
Correct.
By that time, and you said, well, why don't you go again? We had been there four times, all the four times.
Well, I didn't know at that time you had been there four times, I'm talking about the July twenty-ninth one, you hadn't been there four times.
By that time, we had been there three times.
Okay.
We went back August twelfth, now with a lawyer, in order to obtain a, the form to file the petition, which was finally filed, only when the lawyer, Luke Hilbert, became involved.
Okay, now, I see you have something, wait, Dr. Romero, I see you have something in your letter here about, uh, the August twelfth, you had a meeting, your lawyer had a meeting?
Yes, Cindy is going to mention all of this.
Oh, he's going to send you the... Okay. You have a question?
Yeah. I just want to say, those emails, can you print them out and bring them to us?
Yes, I have.
We've got them all. Do you have anything you request?
Let me just show you. It's a big file since July 12th.
Why don't you tell your... You're not going to do that tonight, because like I said, this is not going to be settled tonight. We can see that. So why don't you just have all of prepared? Your attorney will tell you how to prepare all that, and you'll get that to us before the next meeting. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Let me just finish then. I was about to tell you of those four visits to the Buildings Department. The first was July 12th, shortly after we noticed the start of external demolition. July 15th, when we were informed that such regulation, that is, B-2, did not exist, and that there was no reason to ask the ZBA for an opinion. Three, July 29th, when we were again requested to see the plans, they were not made available to us, and neither was the paperwork to petition the ZBA. We were then informed that the Buildings Department had retained counsel and would have nothing further to say about the matter. And we were left with no option then but to hire a lawyer ourselves. So then, the fourth meeting, August 12th, we then retained Luke Hilpert. And Luke Hilpert, Jose Romero, and I scheduled an appointment with the Code Enforcement Officer. At the appointed time, the CEO excluded us, refused to meet with us, and met behind closed doors with Luke. Again, petition forms for the appeal to the ZBA were denied to us. In addition to all of this...
What was your meeting with you?
Mr. Warner.
Mr. Warner, okay.
Yes. In addition to all of this, on July 28th, we personally spoke with Nancy Montgomery, followed up emails on August 5th, and also a further call on August 7th. And with Richard Shea, emails on August 5th, and a follow-up phone call on October 7th. Because of the nonresponsiveness of the Buildings Department by August 12th, the Buildings Department and the town were made aware that we had been left with no recourse other than to go the legal route. In summary, thank you for your patience. One, the building project does not have the required permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. To ignore the ZBA requirement, clearly stated in B-2 of the code, establishes an unwelcome and dangerous precedent for all future construction in our community. Two, the new building is, in essence, a three-and-a-half-story building about sixteen feet from the property line. Three, it devalues our property. Four, imagine if this happened next door to you, particularly as a result of not following the clear zoning regulations. This is an issue that affects each and every property owner. Five, the new owners, architects, have sent around a blast email to community members in which they claim, among other things, that we are wasting the town's time and money. We disagree. This decision is essential in establishing that it is the Zoning Board of Appeals that makes these decisions and nobody else. According to the New York State Department, the New York State Department of State Zoning Enforcement Guidelines, I quote, "The enforcement officer's power is limited to enforcement of the law as it is written. The enforcement officer has no power to modify or waive the zoning regulations, even if she, he disagrees with the required legislation. And further, the legislative body is the only board that has the authority to make zoning amendments, and this power cannot be delegated." End of quote. This issue must be addressed in order to serve all of our mutual interests in protecting and encouraging thoughtful, fair-to-all-parties, impartial, and judicious development in our community. We deserve, need, and have lived by these zoning laws, and they should be applicable to all. Thank you for your patience.
One question, just wanted to say. Well, Mr. Romero, is he here?
Yes, I am.
Come up to the microphone, please, if you would. When you emailed me, and I gave you my phone phone number, you called me, right?
No, you called me, actually.
I called you, okay. And I told you exactly what to do, to go to the town, and he would show you the plans. And if you had any... There's no, you know, there's no...
No question.
No problem between you and him.
Not at all. In fact, and I...
I tried to do as much as I could.
Yes, you did. Absolutely, you gave me very good advice. By that time, we spoke, I guess, around August 15th.
Right.
We had hired our lawyer, and I felt very uncomfortable going yet a fifth time to the Buildings Department to ask for this document, and also to see a faithful copy of the plans. We had, on all these occasions, requested a faithful copy of the plans, so we could look at it and see exactly what the extent of the expansion was.
Okay.
It was only when Luke petitioned, then the petition went through.
Okay. I see this petition is August 12th, and I see that Mr. Halpern noted it, August 12th, on that date. Is that correct? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess probably Mr. Halpern next, will be next, goes after that, and then we'll hear Mr. Raisik.
Okay, thank you. Luke Hilpert on behalf of the Jose Romero Trust. And I guess, really, as Mr. Babcock set forth, we're here asking for the Zoning Board to review specifically Section 175-23B as it relates to this application, to the building permit that was submitted. We came before this board in November. Our application was received and marked as ready. We did have an ongoing Supreme Court matter at that time. That matter has since, based on the fact that we were before this board, has been withdrawn without prejudice. And so we are here before the board. Just I know that was a question last time, and just so that's out there.
You were at a meeting, August 12th, with the Building Inspector?
That's correct.
Okay. And Mr. Romero and Mr. McFack are not allowed in? Is that what you're saying?
I, when we arrived at the...
Can you tell us about that?
Yeah, when we arrived at the Building Department, I, you know, introduced my... I announced myself, and Greg said, "Come on back, we'll look at the file." And we looked at the file. I reviewed it with him. We talked about his reasoning and his rationale for issuing the permit, and the fact that, basically, as the owners state, that they're unfinishing the basement and the basement, you know, and that space is being added on top. We had a conversation. We went back out front, and my client said, "Okay, let's go talk about this." And Mr. Warner said, "You know, now since I've met with your lawyer, and that's, you know, the meeting for today, I'm not going to meet with you any further." So I did meet with Mr. Warner, and we had a conversation.
Did you notify him at that time the appeal was going to be issued?
We talked about the fact that we would be issuing an appeal. He said, "You know, I understand you have clients that are anxious in this, and you have to do what you're going to do."
Okay, thank you.
I think was, you know, the essence of our conversation.
All right. I think Mr. Romero, go ahead.
We had made an appointment for the four of us to meet at 2:00. It was intended and made that way. When we arrived, he asked Luke in and said that he was simply not going to meet with us. After they emerged, he just refused to talk and refused to give me, again, the paperwork or produce a faithful copy of the architectural plans.
All right, thank you.
I will just say, as a result of that meeting, we did obtain the architectural plans.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Raisik, I bet. Mr. Raisik?
If I could...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you short. Go ahead.
That's okay. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, you know, a few items. One, the crux of the owner's application here is that they are unfinishing this basement. And I think, as Mr. Babcock pointed out, the plans clearly show that this basement, there is a new wood-burning stove being added in the basement in a corner. There are these large sliding glass doors that are going to go out to additional patio that is going to be added impermeable surface.
Is it the basement?
This is all out of the basement.
Correct.
When that patio appears, that it'll be a screened-in or a three-season room type patio. I can't tell directly from the plans, but it is an additional impermeable surface. They are increasing the nonconformity in the side yard by adding the second floor. There's no doubt in my mind that they're doing that. And they are increasing the floor plan, because that basement is, as soon as this CBO is issued, things are going to be moved into the basement, and it will be. Doesn't appear to be any other reason to have a wood-burning fireplace down there. I don't know if the Board has made a site visit, but that may be...
You made a what, I'm sorry?
If the Board has made a site visit, or if you're inclined to do a site visit on these...
We're going to... First of all, last meeting, we had nothing. We had no building plans, we had nothing. So we were kind of working in, you know, like a deer in headlights. I'd like to let you, if it's okay, ask your client if the Board could be able to make a site visit before the next meeting.
My clients are the neighbors, absolutely.
Both, both. I mean, it's not fair, because I want to look at his house and see. He's telling me you can't see a mountain or something like that, the mountain. So I would like to see, you know, things like that, and see, you know, what it is. So there's no objection there?
No objection.
No objection, okay, thank you.
And I would also just like to, I did receive correspondence from Mr. Smith. That's also been submitted to the Board, and between now and the next meeting, since the meeting is going to be held open, I will submit...
Yes.
Which will include their emails and all of the things that the Board has requested.
Yeah, all the emails, and any other thing you want to submit. Just try and get it to our secretary about like ten days before the meeting, something like that. So this way, she can copy it and forward it to us, because we get it like a week before, usually something. We have time to review it, because a lot of things here tonight, we got, we can't have time to review.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the appeal that we have says that the application date is April 12th.
August 12th.
I'm sorry, August 12th. And did you file this on August 12th?
It was not filed on August 12th. I believe my office had sent it in. We did receive correspondence in September that said we were on the September agenda. That was then, we were then told it was not. I then spoke with Tara Percicello, who acknowledged that she needed the application from us. I brought the application down, and I think it was officially received on the 10th of October. It's, I think, the date that is on there.
So that's when you filed the appeal, October 10?
That's what it...
2019?
I'd have to double-check the date on it, but it was...
That's what the...
Whatever the, it is stamped on top there.
The date stamp. We have since October 10th.
That's correct.
So why does it say August 12th?
That's the date I met with them, and we reviewed it.
That's the date you met with Mr. Warner?
Right. Met with Mr. Warner, we went back, I prepared the paperwork, they came in and signed it.
And you told them you were going to file an appeal, okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, go on.
Yeah.
You told Greg Warner you were going to file the appeal on August 12th?
I don't know if I said I'm filing it today, or, but we did have a conversation, Greg and I had a conversation. He said, "We've had a working relationship for years." And he said, and I said, "Look, you know, we're going to have to do something here." So I absolutely understand that, and, you know, this isn't anything personal. This is, you know, so we had that conversation, and...
So he knew on August 12th that an appeal was going to be filed?
I don't know what he knew on August 12th. I know that we had a conversation about the fact that my clients were against this project, and based on my interpretation of the law was different than his interpretation of the law, and that we would be taking action. I don't...
But you wondered you'd be taking action.
We had that conversation, yes.
Okay.
I lost my place. But I would just like to point out, there was a question at the last meeting about staying the construction. And I would just like, Section 175-59L does talk about that all proceeding should be stayed during the course of an appeal unless the zoning administrative officer says there's peril to life or to property. This property certainly is enclosed, it's been winterized, there is, the windows are there. I don't believe there's any immediate peril to property by work stopping between now and the time a decision is made. And I think that the Section 175-59L would support that. And so I'd ask the Board to consider taking that action tonight, since the meeting will be held open, and to stay any further work. I don't believe that it would, based on the fact that everything is close to the elements and conversations we had in court as to where the property stands, I don't think there would be any additional, or any damage to property or to life by doing so.
Okay, so you're asking for a stop work order? Is that what you're intending?
I'm asking that, just in accordance with 175-59L, that the all proceeding, everything to do with the property be stayed, and that they not be able to continue. And yeah, so essentially, yes, I'm asking that work be stopped until there's a determination. My concern with anything here is, ultimately, if the Board does decide that, to hear this matter and decides that a, an application to the Board should have been made, the fact that the work continues just puts them further and further down the road. And, you know, they did have notice a while back that we were coming to this Board and that we were seeking this remedy, but as we get further down the road and the property is more complete, it certainly puts a, more of an onus on this Board. So I think that because of that stopping work, where there's no real harm to the homeowners would be an appropriate remedy.
Isn't it true that you, on behalf of your clients, did file in court a request for injunctive relief?
That's correct.
And with respect to that proceeding, you withdrew. Is that correct?
That's correct. We withdrew because, in our application for injunctive relief, we didn't know if this Board would hear our, would hear our application. And once this Board, at the last meeting, said that they would hear our application, we went, we were in court the next day. And I informed the judge of what had happened, that this Board was going to hear this, and that we no longer lacked an administrative remedy. The fact that this Board has agreed to hear this petition, that we're here before it on a public hearing, means that we have an administrative remedy at law, therefore, the injunctive relief is not proper in the Supreme Court, and that's why we withdrew the action.
Can I just clarify for myself? What is the remedy that you seek?
That we seek today?
Yeah.
Well, the remedy that we're seeking is an interpretation. So we're asking this Board to make a determination whether this building permit should have been issued by the Building Inspector without the Board having, without the Zoning Board having had to issue a special permit.
Okay.
And meantime, you're in for a stop work order?
And in the meantime, I'm asking for, I'm asking for a stop work order and for the Board to consider that, again, because the continued construction is a significant damage to the neighbors, and I think it's, it does nothing to the homeowners but delay. So, thank you.
Mr. Raisik.
Hello, my name's Tim Raisik. I'm the owner of 529-9D. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to just make a couple of points, and I'm going to let my attorney speak more to the point. We bought the house, we did plans, we got permits from both the Health Department and the Building Department. We're adding a second story, which stays within the existing footprint of the house. The second floor does not encroach into the required front yard setback. The second floor does not increase the dimensional nonconformity of the existing house. So therefore, we respectfully offer that the zoning variance, a zoning variance is not required per Town Code 1723-B1, and the building permit was issued correctly as of right. Furthermore, the appeal for the zoning interpretation was made well beyond the sixty-day time limit permitted by the Town Code in Section 1759-F1. So we respectfully offer that it should be dismissed on a procedural basis. Those are my points.
Okay. Another question. At, like, last meeting, I really didn't have any information. Like I said, I had no building plans. So I took the liberty of going on your website, Jankow Raisik, and I saw it says Garrison House.
Yes.
Is that this particular house? Is this a fair rendering of...
Yes. You're welcome to come, and I'll take you through the house.
Okay, so you have no problem for a site inspection?
No problem.
Okay. Because we want to probably do that to both homes, so we just want to make sure.
Okay, no, I have no problem. I have nothing to hide.
Anything else?
No.
You sure?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Raisik's attorney, Mr. Smith, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Frank J. Smith III from the Law Office of William A. Schilling Jr., and we represent the respondent, Hillen Valley Properties LLC. The premises in question is located at Route 9D, or 529 Route 9D, Garrison, New York, tax map number 81-1-17. Before reaching the merits of the interpretation that we're discussing this evening, I contend that this appeal should be summarily dismissed due to untimeliness. In order to ascertain how the appeal is untimely, we need to go through a brief timeline of action. action. First, was that on November 15, 2018, the building permit in question was issued. Second, construction began at the premises on or about June 24, 2019. As Mr. Babcock has stated, there was actual notice on July 12, 2019, that construction was taking place on the premises. The appeal.
How was that notice done? In July, is that actual notice? I'm sorry.
I'll get into it further, but there, there are two dates of notice that are being contended by the appellant. First was in their Article 78 proceeding, which is a verified complaint, which is sworn to under the penalty of perjury, which states that notice was given on July 24, when the neighbors recognized that construction was going on. At the November 18 meeting and again here this evening, Mr. Babcock said that they knew of the construction on July 12, when they first went to the Building Department, and that will be relevant for reasons you'll see momentarily. And then lastly, on October 16, there was an Article 78 filed, which, as Mr. Hilbert has stated, has been withdrawn and discontinued. It's well established in New York that a code enforcement officer's decision can be appealed within 60 days upon the filing of that decision. That's in New York State Town Law, Section 267-A5B, and the Phillips Town Zoning Code, Section 175-59F1. New York State through case law has carved out an exception for a neighboring property owner who may not know of the issuance of a building permit. It's the situation that we have here. Mr. Romo and Mr. Babcock would have no idea that my clients went to the Building Department and were issued a permit until they saw or knew that construction was taking place. In instances like that, the courts have held strongly that the neighbor or the aggrieved party has 60 days upon actual or constructive notice of the project to bring the appeal. Again, that's why the July 12 date is very important. It's been admitted to on the record at two meetings now that the construction was discovered on July 12, and if you look at the October 10 filing of the appeal, you'll see that that's clearly outside of the 60-day requirement. If we used the July 12 date, a timely appeal should have been filed by September 10, and even if the respondent concedes to the July 24 date that was in the verified Article 78 proceeding, that date that the appeal would have to have been filed by was September 22. Although the appeal is dated August 12, it was not properly filed with the Building Department for the zoning board until October 10. That's the date that the timestamp reads. In my submission to this board on December 12 of last year, I provided you with a number of cases that speak to this proposition. Our municipal neighbor to the north, the Village of Cold Spring, dealt with a very, very similar scenario just a few years back. That case was called Peel v. Village of Cold Spring. It was decided by the Appellate Division, Second Department. That court has presidential value and is binding on us in this jurisdiction. In that case, there was a building permit issued to replace a shed. The neighboring property owners did not appeal within 60 days of constructive or actual knowledge of the shed being replaced. The Village of Cold Spring zoning board dismissed the appeal due to untimeliness. That decision was appealed to the Supreme Court of Putnam County via Article 78. That judge determined that the zoning board of appeals was correct and that the appeal was untimely and that it was okay to be dismissed. That decision of the Supreme Court was then appealed to the Appellate Division. The Appellate Division once again affirmed the Supreme Court, which affirmed the zoning board, which said that the appeal was untimely since it was not within 60 days of actual or constructive notice of the work being done under the building permit. Although the petitioner contends that they could not appeal the determination, Mr. Hilbert was engaged on, on or about August 12. Similarly, if the Building Department was so unwilling to provide documents, New York State does have a robust Freedom of Information law, which those documents could have been discovered through. For those reasons, prior to reaching the merits, the appeal should be dismissed because it's been filed untimely. Secondly, if the board does reach the merits of the interpretation, we contend that the building inspector's interpretation was correct. It's undisputed that 529 Route D is a nonconforming use. The nonconformity is in one side yard setback. The code requires 30 feet for side yard setback. On the southwest corner of the house, it is 20.46 feet from the property line, and in the southeast corner, it's 16.2 feet from the property line. That represents dimensional nonconformities of 9.54 feet and 13.8 feet respectively. It's also important to note that the property fully complies with front yard setback. The code requires 60 feet and the premises is 193.9 feet from the front property line. The relevant code provision, that's the subject of this appeal for interpretation, is Section 175-23B. This section governs the expansion or enlargement of a nonconforming use. This section states, quote, "Nonconforming buildings or other structures shall not be enlarged, extended, or structurally altered except where the enlargement or extension does not increase the nonconformity." In this instance, the nonconformity is one side yard setback. The work that was done under the permit did not reduce that side yard setback whatsoever. The footprint is exactly the same as the property was prior to the issuance of the permit. Section 175-23B also states that the height of a nonconforming principal building that encroaches into a required front yard setback area may not be increased within the setback area. Again, the premises fully complies with front yard setback and provides 133.9 feet more than what the code requires. The Supreme Court of the United States, along with Section 175-74 of the zoning code, requires that the statute be read in its ordinary meaning, and the code also states that any words in the zoning code should be given their customary meanings. In this case, the word "except" clearly creates an exception for expanding nonconforming uses. A nonconforming use may not be expanded or enlarged except where it does not increase the nonconformity. In this instance, the work done under the permit doesn't touch the nonconformity. Yes, we do go up, but we do not go closer to the property line. Furthermore, the building inspector was correct that Section 175-23B2 of the code does not apply. This section allows for a 25% expansion of floor area in a nonconforming use by grant of a special permit by this board. In this instance, the floor area was not increased. The finished basement utilizing 1,192.34 square feet was unfinished. Thereby, that square footage was removed from a floor area calculation. Section 175-74B, the definition of floor area explicitly excludes unfinished basements in determining the total floor area. The newly constructed second floor utilizes 1,192.34 square feet. That's the same exact amount that was taken from the basement and moved upstairs. There was no increase in floor area whatsoever. There is one item that I would like to address, that I did not prepare this evening, that was brought up previously, and it's that I believe that a, a work order or stop work order is completely inappropriate, given the context of what we're dealing with here. We were last before this board on November 18, almost two months ago. That was ample and adequate time to prepare any supporting documents to be sent to this board for your review. I was able to get you a presentation, Mr. Rasic was able to get you a narrative, and along with the building plans that were included in his submission, and we did all of this by December 12, well in advance of the 10 days that you look for, for a submission.
Hold on one second. I got, we got the building plans September 12?
They were included in Mr. Rasic's submission to the board, and I have a copy of that letter here, and that letter was dated November 23, 2019.
November 23. So how, you're saying September 12, November 23? I'm, I'm at a loss, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
I never saw the building.
In this, in this letter, there were photographs and there were surveys. I, I stand, I stand corrected.
All right, all right. I, I know you're an attorney, I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I know I didn't get the building plans.
No, I, I misspoke, I thought the plans were included in that letter, but the permit itself was included, photographs and the survey.
Okay, so we got a survey. We got a survey.
Correct.
I got it here, right?
And, and the survey reflects the side yard setback as well as the front yard setback.
But there's no building plans here.
You are correct, sir.
Go ahead.
Yep, I stand corrected, thank you. Lastly, during this entire period of time, there was an Article 78 proceeding that was brought inappropriately prior to administrative relief before this board, seeking an injunction. Again, that was discontinued because the judge was unwilling to rule on it because we were still pending here. And, and the issue that the neighbors have in terms of the damage that they believe is being done by the construction, the majority of that construction has already taken place. We've already gone up the second floor. If there was any damage in that, it would be in existence today. Stopping work at this point, I, I don't think is appropriate, given the fact that this is a lawful permit that was applied for and approved, and, and this appeal is, is challenging it. So for right now, this permit is valid in full effect, the majority of work on the outside has been done, and, and I think that a, a stop work order would be entirely inappropriate in this scenario.
Okay, I have a question. Can you get the board a copy of the original CO for the house? When Mr. Rasic bought that home, he got a CO, original CO.
So long as it's on file with the Building Department, I should be able to, to get that without a problem.
The Building Department Inspector's here tonight, I'll ask him if he could supply it, okay? I'd like to see the original CO to see what the square footage was of the house and the original CO.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, and I, I'll certainly request it and.
Your client has no, no problems with us going down doing a site inspection?
No, no, that would be, that would be more than fine.
That would be inside the house also.
I'm sorry?
Inside the house also.
I will take you everywhere.
Huh?
Yeah.
I'll take you everywhere. Okay, good.
Nope, that's absolutely fine. So, I thank you for your time and consideration, thank you again. If you have any further questions, I'm available, so is Mr. Rasic, and we're, we're more than willing to supply you guys with anything you're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner, I guess, Mr. Warner here?
Yes.
Come up and speak, please. Oh, I'm sorry, just one question. I just, I'm sorry, I just, one more question from you, if you would, I apologize.
No, no problem.
On August 12, I see this, this thing is filed, the application was filed August 12, no, right?
No.
No, I mean filed, I mean it was, the date is August 12.
Yes.
I wasn't saying it was filed, correction. And Mr. Hilbert endorsed it and notarized it, and he had a meeting with Mr. Warner and he told him he was gonna start a proceeding. You don't consider that a filing?
Absolutely not.
Okay, you don't consider that.
No, I don't think the courts in New York say it would either.
You don't consider that noticing the town?
I think that there's a very big difference between telling someone that you intend to do something and actually doing it. I think that it's unambiguous, that state law is clear, Town Code is clear, case law is clear. If you look at the Cold Spring case, it stands on almost all fours with the proposition that we have here. I firmly believe, and the courts have ruled on this in a number of occasions, particularly in the Appellate Division, Second Department, which is binding on us in the Ninth Judicial District, that if someone does not have knowledge of a building permit being issued, because they're not a party to it, but they're a neighbor or someone else who may be aggrieved, they have 60 days. And I think that after this evening, it is absolutely clear that construction was noticed by Mr. Babcock and Mr. Romo on July 12. So 60 days from July 12 would be the period of time in which that application and appeal was due. I also think it's important that if we look at that August 12 date, when Mr. Hilbert was brought on board in this case, that gave almost a month to prepare the application. So there was a month of time where the applicants here had counsel and did not appeal to this board. So my contention is that there was absolutely ample opportunity to comply with the 60-day requirement that is in fact law in New York State, and it was not done. And I truly believe that that, for that reason, this appeal should be dismissed prior to hearing any issues on the merits themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner?
Good evening.
Go ahead. I guess we're asking you about the building permit. They're saying, Mr. Romero's complaint is that it's basically more than 25%? Let's start with that.
No, it's, the square footage of the house is gonna be the same at the beginning of the construction and the same at the end of the construction. There's no increase in floor area.
You're saying unfinished basement, the basement was finished, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then he unfinished it?
He demoed it, yes.
Demoed it, they took out the bathrooms and wiring and sheetrock?
The stove that you're making mention of is laying on its side down in the basement, I think he was hoping to repurpose that at some point in time.
All right.
But it's not physically installed, it's not there.
What's not, what's not there, I'm sorry?
The wood stove that he made mention of earlier.
The wood stove, okay. I had a conversation with you a couple of weeks ago, and you told me that you thought that the owner may come back after he gets a CO and try and get 25% more.
No, we said that was a possibility and he'd be entitled to request that, but I didn't say that he was planning on doing that, I said.
Okay.
If he wanted to, providing all this is clear and he moves into his house, that's when he'd be subject to that 25%, 'cause that would be the point in time where he would be experiencing an increase.
Okay. Mr. Romero said that basically that you, he has taught about the appeal and you're denying his appeal?
I don't, I don't hand out those, that is not my purview, that's done by the clerk for this board, I don't do those. I have never touched one in my life, and they're also available online.
Okay. Did, did you mention to Mr. Romero that you denied his appeal? Did you say that?
No, I did not.
Okay, all right, just asking, you know, we're trying to get.
He had asked me one time, he said there was a concern about, did it comply with the code, and I said it did, and I wasn't interested in arguing with him.
Okay. On the August 12 meeting with Mr. Hilbert, the August 12, did he tell you that, what did he tell you? About, was he gonna file with the town or anything like that? You mention?
I don't, I don't recall that part.
You don't recall that part?
He, he came in to collect some information, we discussed my position versus their position. He asked for a set of plans, I got them to him within a day or two, and we just, you know, that was about it, there really wasn't any.
Okay. Do you have the original CO?
It would be in the building, building file, I believe.
Okay, can you get, can you have that supplied out for the next meeting before the next meeting?
I think it would be best if you were to, that's again handled by my secretary, Linda, who you'd be able to.
I'm sure you can tell your secretary, I'm asking you.
Absolutely, I can, but I don't, I don't wanna, he's kinda pointed out some, he's hinted to the fact that I'm denying him things, so I don't think I wanna handle that file at this point. I think it would be more appropriate for you or.
You're denying me that, you want me to tell her? She's sitting here.
We're not asking you to handle it, handle the file.
How do you want me to get that file to you?
Make sure the file is, gets to us.
How do you want me to get the file to you? Have Linda make copies?
I'm not gonna tell you how to do your job.
We'll just request from the Building Department, the original CO be supplied before the next public.
Your call.
Any questions?
Yeah. Mr. Babcock has, has indicated that he, he had asked you for plans and that you, and he says you denied them the plans.
No, they have the plans, we made them copies of the plans.
But.
And they did view the plans prior to them coming in.
When did, when did you make the copies of the plans?
Pardon me?
When did you make the copies of the plans?
When they were requested by Luke Hilbert.
By his lawyer, but he said that.
They did view the, they did view the file, I believe, they did view the file.
We asked for straightforward copies of the plans, and they were denied. I was told on July 29 that the plans were not there. I was told that I was not entitled to them, that they had retained counsel and they would not discuss the matter any further.
Could you respond to that?
All right, what was, what was the question?
He, he just said that on July, on July 29?
On the 15 and on the 29.
When you come in our office, there's a set, a set of requests on the wall. You can go fill one out and you hand it to my secretary, I do not handle that. So he could have just requested copies, is what Luke Hilbert did. He requested copies, we had them made, and we delivered them to him within a day or two.
Couldn't you have, if, if he was requesting copies and you don't handle that, could you not have asked him to request that of your secretary?
I don't remember exactly what day that was, 'cause you're giving me a bunch of dates, I don't know what date that was.
Well, he just said that he asked for plans on the 29th and I think the 15th of July.
They came into view to file, and they got the file, and they looked at the file.
They looked at the file, okay.
Okay, so however it's gonna be done, we're gonna be supplied with the CO, the original CO before the next meeting, is that correct?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So who originally refused the applicant access to the zoning board?
Nobody did.
Was it the secretary?
Nobody did.
He has, he has email.
His email, he did not ask to go in front of this board, I don't handle that. If he sent me an email saying that, which I don't believe he did, I don't handle that.
All right, well, they'll, they'll have all the emails, they'll.
The board, the board, your board is supposed to, their appeals go to you about my actions, so why would I handle that? I don't handle that.
Don't, don't you, don't you give them a copy of the appeal form when they ask?
I don't handle that, that's done by a clerk in our office.
Oh, okay, but.
It's done by your clerk for your board, not the Building Department clerk.
Okay.
But our clerk works for the Building Department too?
No, they, she's housed in the Building Department.
Well, she has no, she has nothing to do with the Building Department.
She may pick up the phone from time to time.
Okay, but, I mean, it seems to me that certainly that clerk could have been instructed to give them an appeal form. I mean, or.
They did not ask for one.
Well.
And it's available online, and they spoke to the board from what I understand.
Well, I think they were, from, from what I heard, they were expressing concern about the building that was going up and that, you know, and expressing that they were unhappy that, that it was going forward, and one could infer that they would like to have any kind of information about how they could appeal it, seems to me.
I explained to them that it was in compliance with Chapter 175. That was my obligation, I explained it, I explained it on more than one occasion with them.
That's not the point, the point is, they, they listened to what you said, they wanted
That's not the point, the point is, they listened to what you said, they wanted to apply, and someone in the building department told him that they weren't going to give him the application.
That's truly not the case.
I hope you're right.
I know I'm right.
Just so the record's clear, we have an appeal that states stamped October 10, 2019. Is that your understanding?
It's my understanding and that was the date it came in, yes.
Do you have any knowledge of an appeal being filed with the building department before October 10, 2019?
No.
Did you ever refuse an appeal?
No, I don't handle appeals and I wouldn't refuse them anyway. I have, I have no skin in the game on this, it's, I'd be happy, I'm one of the helpful, most helpful people that you can imagine when you come in our department, so that's why I take a little bit of an exception when I'm here tonight.
Well, I'm sorry, you feel that way.
No, but anybody that deals with our department knows that we go out of our way to help.
The appeal is before us, so we're gonna find out everything that's true.
That's fine.
Okay.
I think, I think that there's a question of whether it's the untimely issue really applies here, because it's clear that the people who submitted the appeal expressed that they would, I mean, maybe didn't say they'd like to appeal it, but they certainly expressed dissatisfaction with the project and one could infer that they would wanna appeal it. And they did so at an early date and within the 60-day timeframe, well within it.
They had, they had that filled out, they just didn't file it.
Okay.
Doctor, this is, so, I understand that, and that appears to be the case, appeared to be the case, it wasn't filed until October 10th. Do you agree with that, Mr. Hilbert? I mean, it wasn't officially going into the town stamped October 10th, so we've cleared that up, okay. Just so you know, for the board's point of view, like, I got an email from Dr. Romero, October 28th, that he filed the appeal August 13th. So we can only work with what we have at the point in time.
I don't know who he would've filed it with.
Right, okay, thank you. I have another, anybody got any questions?
I just have a question for the applicant's attorney. Do you have any documentation that the application was submitted within the 60-day timeframe?
I don't have anything here tonight, as I stated, I, yeah, I'd like to, you know, to address Mr. Smith's comments. I know he did, he did send me a copy of what he submitted, but I was not in the office until last week. So I'd like to submit my opposition and we'll clearly lay out our timeline and provide the emails and the information that you've requested.
If you have documentation to show that you applied within the 60 days, I'd like to see it.
Absolutely, yes.
Are you gonna apply for all emails and the town, for Mr. Gregg's email, Warren's emails and so forth, and our emails? Are you planning on doing that?
You, no, you had requested that, that Mr. Babcock and Mr. Romero provide the emails, and that's what I was...
This is what we know.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll give you five minutes, come on, because a lot of people here wanna talk.
I just wanted to show you
Sure.
the amount of expansion.
Go ahead.
I mean, that is beyond the procedural issues of the dates of the appeal.
Well, that's what we're gonna go see.
Yes. Cindy, would you show that please? This is the original structure, the original wrist cottage, a single-story house with a basement. This is the western facade of the new project.
Can you show it to the board, please? They don't vote, we vote.
Oh, that's right.
You're right, but not for me.
Now, I wanted to show you the so-called new basement. This is the porch that enters into the new living space. It has four large sliding doors, it has four big rectangular columns. It spans, from my point of view, approximately two-thirds of the width of the house. It's a very large porch, it's a heated basement. It's not a basement.
Wait, wait, how do you know it's a heated basement?
It is in the plans. There's a wooden stove in the plans, that much I remember.
Okay.
It sits there on this part of the new living space.
Okay.
I mean, this is not a little entrance into a basement for storage or for equipment.
Is there a screen porch there?
It is a screen porch, let me show you now a lateral view.
The building permit says screen porch, that's the line I'm...
Sorry? Yes. This is, the width of the porch is two-thirds of the structure. It is that width. It is also...
All right, talk to...
It is also this deep. It is about half, from a layperson's perspective, half of the depth of the house. It's a very large porch. It begs the question whether this is really entering into a basement. This is screened and it is quite large, and here's the log...
It's screened though.
Well, it appears to be screened, it's certainly grayer than the rest. I mean, I'm not the architect, but here it is again. You can see it's grayer and it has four large door, glass doors, it has three windows. This basement has one facing the river and two facing south. And here is the, and the lateral view. Again, you can see the depth of the porch. And here's the locks for the, I guess for the fireplaces.
Okay.
I think that, you know, we're talking about setbacks and fences. Maybe I would like to quote Ben Franklin?
I'm sorry?
I would like to quote Ben Franklin.
Oh, sure.
He said, "Love thy neighbor, but don't pull your hedge down." And then later on, Robert Frost, mending walls, said, "Good fences make good neighbors." I would add, "Good zoning regulation makes good neighbors." Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak to this, to the audience? No, not you, you've got your turn. Go ahead, I don't mean to be nasty, I'm saying you'll get your turn again, somebody else, yes. You're the contractor, right?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. You're the contractor on this project?
Yeah.
Okay. Your name, please?
Tom Potacek.
You're doing the surprise like two one, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I just wanna say that there's a bunch of inaccuracies about what this is supposed to, what we're expecting to build there. And it's not a finished basement, it's gonna be left with a cement floor.
Is there any heat in it?
No, there's not, it's not a heated, a fireplace, a wood stove is not a heater, it's, would be a, and that's not even slated to go in, that's in the plan, but it's not part of...
It's in the plans, but it's not slated to go in?
But, yeah, because a lot of times things get drawn into plans that don't get built.
Okay, so you're saying that wood stove's not going in?
At this point, we're not sure. But, the thing is, the thing is, you have to have a, go down and, it's not an automatically heated basement. It's not, it's got a concrete floor, it's got unfinished walls. You know, it's not slated to be...
Is there a bathroom there?
No, no bathroom. There's mostly, it's of the what?
The sliding doors, what's the purpose? And what's the, the apartment on...
Yeah, it's gonna be for, he has no garage in this property. There's no place to put a snow blower, there's no place to put a lawnmower, there's no place to put a lot of things that most people have. So the idea is that you wheel it around in a nice setting, so what if you have natural light in your place where you put your equipment, is that against...
You don't, you're saying this is gonna be a storage shed?
It's gonna be multipurpose, 'cause the place does not have a garage. So you can use the basement in a utilitarian manner and it happens to have big sliding doors, so you can wheel it in. It's not, that's my understanding of how it's supposed to be used.
So you want that...
Most of it's boiler and mechanical at the backside.
Right.
And there's slop sink and, you know, things that are usually in a basement.
Okay.
And addressing the third floor space, that's not a real space either.
No, it's not a real space.
It's not, technically, it's not technically a room. No, it's not a usable space.
How do you say not usable, what do you mean?
It's not, in a technical sense, there's a sizing for that, that is provided, that constitutes a room. And it has to have a certain amount of square footage above seven feet, and this does not, because it's...
How high is it?
It goes like this, so it starts from zero on up. And the part that's over seven feet is about, within, less than what would constitute a room.
Goes like this doesn't help me.
Okay, it's a cathedral, it's a cathedral ceiling
Right.
that you can view from below.
How high is it, is my question? You're the contractor.
Yeah, okay, so it goes from zero to about eight or nine feet at the very edge.
Okay.
But the part that's over seven feet is less than the minimal amount to be considered a room, it's under three feet. That has a ceiling part of it over seven feet.
So can a person walk up there?
Only on the very edge. It's not like a space you can actually use, and the Board of Health would not consider it a bedroom.
Well, we're not discussing the Board of Health, we're not discussing...
Okay, fine, but, or a potential bedroom, that's a definition of a room.
Right.
It doesn't fall within that definition.
Okay.
And also, the real reason why I came up here is because if there is a stop-work order, there will be damage done. And he acts like he knows that there won't be, but there will be. I'm the guy who's building this thing, and if it's stopped now, it's gonna flood in the basement, 'cause we don't have gutters on and we just took on a flood. There's a lot of things that are gonna happen, there's condensation that happens in the inside of the building, it's gonna take on a lot of damage, you can't let a sitting, a building sit without heat, that's taking on, that has moisture coming up and that doesn't have ventilation and the sun heats it from the outside and there's a vapor drive coming in or going out. It would be bad to stop this project for technical reasons and it's not about, because they have a gripe, you all of a sudden just stop somebody that has illegal building permit, that's a bad precedent to set.
Right, they have a concern, okay?
Of a view being blocked, I don't believe so. They have a row of trees that have always grown on their property that they could've cut. Go and look, there's no view being blocked.
One question I have to ask, this fireplace, not fireplace, I'm sorry, this wood stove, is it gonna go in or not?
That's up to the owner, but...
Oh, so at this point in time you don't know, but it's sitting there?
No.
It's not sitting there?
There is no wood stove purchased, we don't own it, I don't own it. The old wood stove that was there, and it was a finished-out basement that we demolished, that used to be like a man cave type of basement, that wood stove's still there. And that's not operable, it's a rusty.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, no, no, you, wait, I got the attorney next to you, but I want somebody else, all right?
I just wanna say that...
Your name, please?
My name is Rachel Evans, and just listening, I wanna, I live at 522 Route 9D. I think it's a beautiful home, I've been watching homes go up and get built up and out in all different ways for the 10 years I've been living there. But what I most, mostly wanna say is that I was in a situation in my home in Beacon on a street where we had a variance with what was going on, land use, we had to get a land use lawyer. It was not unusual to go to the building department and not get information. I finally learned, it was like a civics lesson, it is not, it is not, it's lawyer to lawyer, you get, you get, there are channels you have to go through and it's just the way it is. And so I just wanna say, it's not like it's some, you know, it doesn't sound like a dirty plot to keep the people from getting there, from doing the things that had to be done, that's all.
Mr. Smith?
Just a couple of items. First was, you asked whether verbal notice would be sufficient for an appeal. And I did wanna direct you to section 175-59F, which states that an appeal before this board has to be written and submitted to the board. That's number one. Number two is, I'd also like to say, in doing land use and real estate law work, that's a majority of my practice, I can't go to a building department and just ask for a document and have it handed over. It's customary in every building department that you go to where you fill out a Freedom of Information Act request in order to get those documents. And then you take that request and you hand it to the clerk. 99 times out of 100, when I go to a building department, the building inspector isn't there. He has a million other things to do, he's out on site visits, he's reviewing the plans. And I regularly and customarily deal with a clerk or a secretary. So I think that that's, you know, very important as well. I'd also like to state that even if we are to take that August 12th date, that would've still given 28 days to get the appeal in before the September 10th deadline that would be required under the July 12th notice. If we went by the July 24th notice, that would kick the date to, I believe, September 22nd. That would be over a month to prepare your appeal. And given how the town of Phillips Town works your appeals, this is one of the first boards that I've been before where you have your first meeting, where you go through an application and make sure that everything is complete. In a lot of other municipalities that I go before, you submit, they give you your first date, you go and you present. So my point is that Mr. Hilbert was on board August 12th. I think the record reflects that he met with the building department on August 12th. The thing is dated August 12th. I have a hard time believing that that appeal was handwritten in the building department lobby and then handed and it wasn't timestamped. I have the feeling that it was brought back to an office and prepared and somehow something happened to where it wasn't filed on time. But my point is, is that in preparing that document, it does not take more than a month to be able to put the requisite information together to be able to timely appeal. If this board is going to consider listening to this appeal and reaching the merits, you are setting an unfortunate precedent. You're setting a precedent that would absolutely disrupt the way that these situations have been handled for a number of years. If you know of the decision, you have 60 days. When you find out that something is being done under the decision, you have 60 days. In this instance, whether it's 18 days or 22 days late or one day late, it's all the same. It's late and it's against the law. So I did wanna make that point and I thank you again for your time.
Let me ask you a question before you sit down. Is it something about, you need to have to go to town and get, you need a Freedom of Information Act to see the building plans? We have somebody come before us, you know, for an appeal, like for deck or something, whatever, it's on time. We tell them the building permit's on file and you could go there and look at the plan, they don't have to file a Freedom of Information Act. Am I doing it wrong?
Well, it may be the policy of this particular department, I don't know. But in a majority of municipalities that I go to, what I do is I walk in on the board, there's a number of items. They have, you know, the drawing of how you build the joists on your deck, you have a building permit, then you have a Freedom of Information Act request. And by filling that out, you're able to obtain any of the files in the building department. I could go in and ask to look at the file for your house.
It could take a long time.
Well, it shouldn't, and then it would be appealed and then there would be, and this is just to make the argument that if people think that a building inspector or an employee of the building department or even the clerk of the zoning board was telling people, "No, you can't," if you file a Freedom of Information Act request and it's denied, yes, there is a time period in which that decision has to be made, but that can be appealed. And I think, and I don't know this for certain, but I would think that the appeals officer would be the town supervisor or the town clerk, one or the other. So once a Freedom of Information Act is filed, it doesn't matter if it's the building department, if it's the highway department, if it's any other department in the town of Phillips Town, it can be denied. It could be accepted and the papers can be provided, or it can be denied. And if it's denied, it can be appealed. So there are channels to get this information through the proper means. Simply asking is not enough, and again, that may be anecdotal from my experience, but most municipalities I go to require a written Freedom of Information Act request or else they would be handing out files with no idea who's looking at it, what they're doing with it, whether they've taken anything from it.
You're not saying that the code enforcement officers could deny an appeal, are you?
No, no, what I'm saying is, is that it goes through an appeal process. So if you're going to appeal to the zoning board, there's an application, which you guys provide.
In this town... In this town?
And Mr. Warner also said it's available online.
In Phillips Town, let me tell you, okay, so I don't know about other municipalities. I'm only dealing about our municipality and how we deal. In Phillips Town, when somebody comes before to have building plans or something like that, we tell the person who's interested to go to town and get, and take a look at the building plans and the building inspector is always compliant and shows them the plan. We don't do Freedom of Information Act here. So just so you know, when you, next time you know you're dealing here, you know what the story is.
No, of course. The Freedom of Information Law is binding on all of New York State and that is how you get documents that are filed with local governments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? That's it? Just identify yourself, please, sir.
My name's Stephen Wallace. I live in Garrison, Phillips Fork Road, 150 Phillips Fork Road. I once had a piece of land on East Mountain Road and my neighbors kind of ganged up on me. I had, I got wellings permits and everything. I worked with the DEC, I worked with CIC here, CIC, and they tried beating me up, trying to stop me from, they trespassed my property, they tried to make it very difficult for me to build. And my attitude was always, you know, if you wanted to have a park, and they also tried to beat, they were beating up on my neighbor, Bob Jordan, and he was behind me in the process, so he really, they really screwed him up. But it cost him a lot of money to wait to not be able to build. And my feeling is that if the neighbors wanted to, me not to build, then they should have bought the property and if they wanted to have a park. And, you know, my feeling is that the Raisiks, Tim Raisik's a really straight-up guy, he's an architect. It's clear what I'm listening to and what I saw, I saw an email through my wife from the Raisiks. Look at this thing. I read it. And the more I read it, the more I got upset by it. And I wanted to say, like, if I was in Tim Raisik's shoes, I'd be really upset about it and Lisa Raisik's. And I understand neighbors can have issues with what's going on, but when Mr. Romero picks up the pictures, you see a one-story average shack or cabin and then you see a really nice house that's conforming, conforming in a non-conforming situation. And I just see like, and also, it's after 60 days, so there are laws, there are rules and I see that the Raisiks are following the rules. They were given a permit from the buildings department and so if they go ahead, they start construction, then they get shut down. It's costing them money, they're going to state supreme court. And I just see this like, it's kind of an open and shut. I know that there's subjective things to it, but I see this as a very clear decision and I really feel for them. I think they're great community members as well and because I live in this community, I know how much they give to our community. But I just wanted to say, you know, that I feel like they have the right to build this and that I think that they're doing a community, making the community better for what they're going to be building and that's what I want to say.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else would like to speak? Yes?
One final thought.
One final thought. Go ahead.
Well, it is claimed that this is a 13...
Yeah, I can go Ben Franklin again, are you?
13 percent addition.
Okay, go ahead.
That this is a 13 percent addition of living space.
That's a good-looking house.
In the eyes of the holder.
Okay, come on.
This is three stories of living spaces. You cannot get any equipment through this green porch, I certainly wouldn't. It is claimed that this is only a 13 percent volume expansion. With a mathematical sleight of hand, they increase the denominator of the fraction, decrease the numerator and come up with 13 percent. This is, from my point of view, at least 200 percent, plus the porch, which is living space.
All right, so is no one else? I'm sure now. Nobody else? Last call. Okay. What we're going to do here, we're going to continue this public hearing until February 10th. We're going to give both attorneys a chance to put in any information they would like to put in. And I could say, try to get at least in 10 days, you get it two weeks before or something like that, to our town clerk so we can have, you know, have the information to study. Both the owner of the property and both properties have agreed to a site, you know, inspection by the board. Sometimes we can't all get down here together or something like that, so they have your